Good evening. I call to order the January 13, 2014 meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our hall.
The first order of business tonight is the acceptance or correction of the minutes from the January 6, 2014 Selectmen's meeting. Does anybody have any corrections?
Move to accept.
Motion to accept. In a second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. I do have a few announcements for folks. The first is the Town of Goffstown Board of Selectmen Bond Hearing and Budget Committee, 2014 Budget Hearing. The location for both of these hearings will be the Craig Heber Auditorium at Goffstown High School on 27 Wallace Road, January 16, 2014. That's this Thursday night at 6:30 PM. The Board of Selectmen will hold a bond hearing. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a bond hearing on a $4,565,000 bond for the restoration and expansion of the fire stations in Goffstown. Following that hearing, again on Thursday, January 16, at 7:00 PM, same location, the Craig Heber Auditorium at the high school, the Budget Committee will conduct a public hearing on the 2014 budget for the town, the school, the Goffstown Village Water Precinct, and the Grassmere Village Water Precinct. Snow dates for either of those would be January 21 for each of those, although it doesn't look like that'll be an issue. Looks like the long-range weather forecast is predicting warm and good weather. I have another announcement. It's for the candidate filing period for town and school offices. The filing period is currently open. It closes January 31 at 5:00 PM.
I don't think it opens till the 22nd.
Twenty-second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're not. Well, I'm a little ahead of myself. Okay. It opens on January 22 and closes on January 31 at 5:00 PM. There are a list of open positions. I will read them for folks who are maybe watching and hearing in the audience. There is one selectman position open for three years, four budget committee positions open for three years, one cemetery trustee position that's open for three years, three open library trustee positions for three years, two planning board positions for three years, one sewer commission position for three years, one supervisor of the checklist position for six years, the town clerk position for three years, the town moderator position for two years, one position on the trustee of trust funds for three years, two positions on the zoning board of adjustment for three years, and there are three positions on the school board for three years. Another public announcement, the Goffstown Supervisors of the Checklist. The Supervisors of the Checklist will be in session at the Town Hall in the Administration Office at 16 Main Street in Goffstown on Tuesday, January 21, 2014, from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM for the purpose of making corrections to the checklist and for new voter registrations. Change of address and party affiliation changes can be made at this time. If you are registering to vote, please bring your photo ID, proof of date of birth, and residence address. Anyone not born in the United States must also bring proof of citizenship. Any person with a disability who needs to be provided reasonable accommodations in order to participate, please call the Town Hall at (497) 8990-EXTENSION100 at least 72 hours in advance so arrangements can be made. Those are the announcements that I have. Are there other announcements from other members of the board? None? All right, thank you. It's a little early for our public comment session, so Sue, let's start on the Town Administrator's report and we'll stop at 6:10 and then come back.
Okay. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet. The only change to that is tomorrow night, the sewer commission has canceled their meeting, but the Budget Committee will be meeting at 6:30.
Room 106, same room?
Yes, same room.
Okay, library, is that covered? Alan?
No, I can't get there.
Cover for Alan Wednesday night for the library?
I can go there and then leave to go to Parks and Rec. I've done that before, yes.
Take another local express over there? Okay. And then again, the bond hearing is at 6:30 and the Budget Committee hearing is at 7:00.
I'll be there for bond.
Okay.
All right, consensus folder tonight and employee status report, change in status for an employee and 2014 default budget, which you can postpone until you discuss it later, I guess. We're going to have that discussion at E. So what you'd be voting on is just the employee's status report and the mutual aid agreement with town aware for the building inspector for coverage for vacations.
Motion to accept those items in the consensus folder.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And you have, for correspondence, a letter from Ravi Grady with an update regarding the scenic byway, and that's at 4C in your packet. Assessor's recommendations, you have a report of a timber cot map, 12 lot 2.
To accept.
Second. Motion and second to accept the assessor's recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
I don't think, I don't know if we have enough time to go through the default budget. Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, no, let's hold off on that so we don't have to stop.
Okay.
Stream. GTV.
GTV budget? That is at 4H in your packet. And as you recall, GTV is now a revolving fund, so it's not subject to the Municipal Budget Act in terms of voting on the budget. But the Board of Selectmen oversee this budget and therefore it's in your packet, so you can see how much his budget is for next year. We estimate the revenue to be $123,000. Any questions on the GTV budget?
I'm all set.
Good to go.
Thank you for getting that, Susan.
Okay. And we will enter that into the automated system once that module is installed.
Okay, we're still a couple of minutes early for public comment, but I see folks here, I think, are here for public comments, so we'll start now and as other folks wander in, we'll take them as they come. Is there someone who would like to step forward and comment this evening? Yes, sir?
Yes, very jihonic, Goffstown. Well, I'd like to congratulate you Nick for the excellent job of thinking out of the box and coming up with some good ideas, and I think you're doing one hell of a nice job.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Adams, you, I can't believe. It's almost like a saint sat in there after the last two chairman that we've had. One wouldn't even let you talk, but he could babble on like a village idiot for an hour and say nothing. And you give the taxpayer time to say something, and I just think it's great, and you'll listen to him. And not only that, your leadership paid off because you look at, what was it, in what you went through there, I thought it was great.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, first night when you came in, I hadn't known anything of you, nothing at all. So the only thing I said to you was, I hope you don't disappoint us. And I'll tell you, your experience, your knowledge as a businessman has really showed up, and I hope the other two selectmen follow your lead as far as the business end of it out there hustling, working hard, and making a dollar and surviving. I think you've really done an outstanding job. Now, Mr. DeVanzo, I see that you're not running, and I would thank you for that. I think it's probably the first thing in 20-something years that you've done good for the town of Goffstown. Right, Mr. Olmey, a few weeks ago, you voted for something, didn't know what the hell you were voting on. Then you turn around, came back the next week, and wanted to re-vote on everything and hash it all over again. The only thing I can say is you don't know what the hell you're doing. Maybe you shouldn't vote, or maybe you should resign.
Thank you much for the comment, sir.
You're welcome, and thank you for the opportunity of expressing my opinion. Oh, before I leave, I think somebody ought to start looking into a couple of department heads. I was just, was a reading, a hearing, we have a forestry truck that is in such bad shape, and oh, we gotta go out and spend $130,000 to buy another one so we can take it out through the woods to do what this one's supposed to do. Well, if it's in this bad a shape, what the hell has the chief been doing as far as maintaining the equipment? For what ails that truck? A windshield wiper, or motor, or whatever? You mean that's that expensive that he can't afford to have that fixed? I didn't hear anything on that truck that was that expensive that couldn't be fixed. The next question, oh, it's slow. Well, how fast do you have to go to get to a fire? That truck that year, I know went at least 55. So I don't see a big issue there. The other thing that I really have a problem with is Queer. He's used to coming in here and getting anything he wants, and he'll keep on coming back with all new excuses and everything. Well, if he was doing his job, why did we have to replace a 10-year-old dump truck that works for the town that doesn't work hard or anything else because it rotted out? And you look at the facility that's down there, why did truck wash out, well, rot out? You mean he can't take a pressure washer and wash it down after it's been salting? You know, the guy isn't doing his job. Look at Tyrrell Hill and the drain 16 inches below the road surface right next to the road. That's engineering? And he had to have a shoulder machine. Well, drive all around town right now, especially when the roads are slippery and icy and you've got shoulders where the cars run off that are six and eight inches below the edge of the road. Nothing's been done with him. Now, if a car goes off there and somebody gets in a serious accident, crippled, hurt, or killed, you think he's going to feel sorry? Oh, well, he doesn't care. You know, maybe somebody ought to start looking at his performance because it's very poor. And why is he getting a raise every year for his incompetence? He can't patch a pothole? He can't fix a shoulder? Go up and look at his engineer on Tyrrell Hill Road, drains right next to the edge of the road, 16 inches below. Car gets squeezed off the road or anything for somebody hogging the road, they just wrecked their car, took the front end out from underneath it if they didn't go through the windshield. That's been how long? Hasn't nothing been done about it. It's time somebody starts looking at his work, because I'll tell you, he isn't much of anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Someone else would like to comment this evening? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Scott Gross, 57 Range Road. Today, I filed a RSA 91A request for information right under the right-to-know law, and one of the reasons why I did that is I had the opportunity to watch a planning board meeting, it was a hearing last Thursday, and I was just very disturbed watching that meeting. It was not only unprofessionally run, but more importantly, there were some things that happened there that I think every single elected official and citizen should be concerned with and want some answers to. So that's why I filed it. And predominantly, I filed it because as a selectman, I spent about a year with a committee and a couple of you talking about our code of conduct, and I think I have some serious concerns about that. So I just wanted to read some of this into the record since, so there's some clarity to it. In watching the meeting, there were some people who came to the hearing and asked for the chairman, John Heikal, to recuse himself on a couple of these different warrant articles, and they did so for a couple of reasons. One, the chairman owned a piece of property that was being considered for commercial rezoning. He had also publicly supported the zoning petition in a letter to the Goffstown News as well as on GTV. And in his letter to the Goffstown News, Mr. Heikal failed to mention that he was writing the letter as a private citizen. So when you're a chairman of a board, you know, you should at least state that these are your own personal views. And last but not least, which is the one that I found most egregious, was there was a petitioner who came who had a prior relationship with the chairman and was also involved in litigation with him, and she asked him to recuse himself based upon those grounds. And basically, Chairman Heikal said that he was not going to recuse himself as he consulted with the town attorney. Two of which, a couple of members of the planning board then asked, they were kind of confused about that. So my right-to-know request is the following. Question number one, do the municipal records reflect that Mr. Heikal was provided a copy of the town of Goffstown's code of conduct? And if there's a copy of such record, I'd like to try to get that, and do they sign anything when they do get it? Question two, can you provide to me any documentation through a vote of the planning board that they authorized the chairman to contact the town attorney? Because as you all know, is that individual selectmen or individual planning board members do not have the ability to contact the town attorney because they're expending town funds. And they derive their authority, chairman, as you know, derive their authority from the board. And I'd like to know whether or not he had that authority from his board to do so. My third question is I wanted to determine whether or not the town attorney did indeed have a conversation with him and whether or not the facts that were represented to him were basically what was stated at the public hearing and whether the answer that Attorney Drescher gave was also in accordance with that conversation. And my fourth question is, does attorney-client privilege exist when the client is actually you, the town of Goffstown, and not an individual member who may or may not have even had the direction from his board to contact the attorney? And my last inquiry is, if I cannot get some of this information due to the fact that it is attorney-client privilege, I think that you as the Board of Selectmen and the planning board should be able to get that because, again, town funds were expended and you should be entitled to that legal opinion that was provided. I understand that issues of zoning and town planning can be controversial, however, the process needs to be transparent, fair, and ethical to the citizens of Goffstown. And my concern was that while the intentions of the petitioners and Chairman Heikal may have been good, the process and the execution of the planning board public hearing were flawed, and it left the public feeling as that it was not full disclosure. The public has the right to know whether Chairman Heikal did or did not have a conflict of interest that night that would have either legally or ethically required him to disqualify or recuse himself. If Mr. Heikal did not have a legal conflict of interest, then disclosing the town's attorney's written opinion in this matter to the public would end any doubt and help restore the public's confidence in the process. Furthermore, it's important for the public to know whether or not Mr. Heikal was provided a copy of the town's code of conduct. This document serves to assist town officials so they avoid possible conflicts of interest. It also serves to advise elected and appointed officials that for the public's benefit and confidence in government, they should recuse themselves from any matters in which they have a personal or financial interest. While there is no legal obligation to abide by the code of conduct, it does provide elected and appointed officials with a baseline of conduct that is expected from the citizens that they represent. So that's really my main concern, is that we have this code of conduct. I personally spent months working on it. We had a committee that did it. I believe that there were several violations of that code of conduct. It's supposed to be an educational document. So if Mr. Heikal was not aware of it, he needs to be aware of it. He should be disclosing things. In my opinion, from reading the code of conduct, he should have recused himself, and he did not. So my request is that you take a look at this because the code of conduct says that when you see something that does not look right, we should be letting the chairman know of that committee or the Board of Selectmen. Well, since he is the chairman of that committee, that's why I am here. So I also want to commend Selectman DeVanzo, who was there, who did raise the issue of the code of conduct that evening, and it, obviously, the chairman can do what he wants. There was no request of the board at that time to have to officially ask him to recuse himself. And last but not least, I would like to suggest that perhaps when you do your all-boards meeting, that maybe you review the code of conduct with all the chairman and maybe ask them to review it, because it is an important document. We spent an awful lot of time on it, and I think it's just important that the public see the transparency of government and, most importantly, that we try to abide by these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Scott, I just want to say that we didn't see this email till today, so we haven't had a chance to, obviously.
I understand.
But I think you raised some valid questions, and we'll look into those and get some answers for you within the statutory timeframe.
Okay. If you need more time, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
I would.
Good. Hello.
As usual, copies for all. Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Pam Annie. I live at 46 Knollcrest Road in Goffstown, New Hampshire. As you know, I am an appointed member of a town committee, impaired the town's code of conduct policy, section 2J, a duty to report, felt it was my responsibility to report what appears to be a violation of the town's code of conduct policy. This is in reference to the officially noticed planning board public hearing of January 9 for proposed petition and planning board warrant amendments, whereas the chair of the planning board, John Adam Heikal, appears to have voted the following sections of, violated the following sections of the Goffstown Code of Conduct Policy. Specific sections include: Purpose, the second bullet; Conduct, impropriety, whereas Chairman Heikal did not conduct duties and activities in a manner that reflected credit upon oneself and upon the town. He did not avoid the appearance of impropriety. Section 2B, Conflict of Interest. Although numerous examples of Chairman Heikal's obvious support of Petition Amendment 14, Mass Road Zoning Change to Commercial, were presented by planning board members, Chairman Heikal refused to recuse himself. Duty to Disclose. As required by Goffstown Code of Conduct Policy 2C, Chairman Heikal did not disclose his public support for Amendment 14, which can be found in numerous media announcements to that effect. Nor did he, prior to enter into discussion or deliberation as required by Goffstown Code of Conduct Policy 2C, disclose his past personal relationship, legal dealings, and the police incidents involving the petitioner of Planning Board Petition Amendment 16. Section 2D, Rules Regarding Speaking on Behalf of the Board. As this policy states, no member of the board shall speak on behalf of his or her board unless authorized. To do so and must clearly emphasize, they are speaking as an individual and not representing the board. On numerous occasions while publicly speaking about Article 14, Chairman Heikal clearly makes known he is the chair of the planning board and fails to mention at all or in a timely manner that he is not representing or speaking on behalf of the board. Section 2E, Recuse. Regarding Planning Board Petition Amendment 16 whereby Chair Heikal refused to recuse himself when examples of conflict were cited, as stated in Duty to Disclose, see above, thereby denying the petitioner the right to speak and the right of the voters, the listeners, and the members of the committee to hear from the petitioner the reason for bringing the amendment forward, thereby forcing the principal to leave without speaking after waiting there for three hours to present the article. I'd like to note that after the petitioner left, members of the committee also expressed their concerns with Chair Heikal's refusal to recuse. 2F, Use of Town Services. Whereby Chairman Heikal availed himself of the town's legal service without apparent authority or permission of the planning board, thereby possibly accruing a cost to the town for said legal services. 2K, Fair and Equal Treatment. Considering all the above, I believe this code of conduct policy was also disregarded. I would like to point out that this presentation to you took three minutes or less, as the Board of Selectmen state in their policies for this such a thing. I want to thank the board for the time, and I want to take a moment to thank Selectman DeVanzo and as well as the board and everyone for their hard work, in particular for this particular incident. Selectman DeVanzo was amazing. He stood up for the residents and for folks to be able to get the fairest hearing they could possibly have, and also, you know, former Selectman Barbara Griffin, who also did a wonderful job. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Someone else like to be heard? Yes, sir?
And I want to note to the board that I brought my own water. I just started off on the right foot.
So noted.
Okay. My name's Lionel Coulon. I live at 54 Orchard Street in Goffstown. I want to thank the two previous speakers for presenting my case very well. I would like the board to ask Mr. Heikal, the chairman of the planning board, to tell us exactly what he said, an elected lawyer, to tell us exactly what he said, and it become part of the minutes of the meeting of the planning board in the ninth. That's number one. Number two, at that planning board meeting, a petitioner alluded to the fact that Mr. DeVanzo belonged to an industrial corporation and that he would benefit by it, personally benefit by it. Chairman Heikal did not allow Mr. DeVanzo to explain what this industrial planning was, and actually is part of the Goffstown town government, and I wish you would allow him at least a few minutes tonight to explain what it is to the viewers and everybody here, exactly what it is, and the fact that he does not personally benefit by this. And Mr. Heikal should have allowed him to explain this, and this was not allowed to be done, and I would hope that the board would allow this. And that's basically it, and everybody else stole my thunder, but it's okay. Again, I want to thank everybody here, you've done a fine job and know the work you've done. I want to thank Selectman DeVanzo for his many years on the board, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Selectman DeVanzo, would you like to address the issue? Would you like a couple of minutes before to clarify?
I would, because it's been stated many, many times that I have a conflict of interest, that I'm on an industrial corporation, and that I benefit by being on an industrial corporation. First of all, what they're referring to is the Goffstown Industrial Corporation, which was on the ballot in 1982 town meeting, created by the town meeting per statute. I don't know the statute off the top of my head, but if you look at the warrant for the 1982 town meeting, it'll be in there. And if you look at the minutes of the 1982 warrant, the following year, when you go to 19, the next year, the minutes are there, you'll also find a note that $25,000 was given by the town of Goffstown to the Goffstown Industrial Corporation as seed money. The purpose of the Goffstown Industrial Corporation is a volunteer corporation, and it is to promote industry throughout the town of Goffstown. And if anybody has any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer. The filings are all public. If you Google Goffstown Industrial Corporation, you will be able to find the complete board of directors. The IRS filings are online, they're public information. All the board of directors are listed, our names are listed, and right next to it on the IRS form, it says compensation. Compensation is listed as zero. So I serve as a volunteer with a zero compensation on the Goffstown Industrial Corporation to promote industry throughout the town of Goffstown.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to comment at this time? That would be the opportunity to come forward. Seeing none, thank you, I'll close public comment period. And get back to the agenda. Let's see, it looks like we are down, Sue, to the default budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's tab four, what was it? Yeah, 4C.
Well, it was emailed to you, and it's in your signature folder, the DRA form.
Can you summarize the default budget?
Yes, Don is here to answer any questions you may have. Don, I don't want to steal your thunder, so I'll fill in the blanks for you, how's that, if there are any?
Sounds fair to me. Good evening.
Good evening.
When Sue asked me to attend tonight, I wasn't sure exactly what any or all of you would ask about the default budget, so I'll confess that I've got a few notes here, but we'll see where it takes us and go from there.
Maybe if I can clarify, because last week, I had requested from Sue if we could get the breakdown. I didn't have any specific questions. I was just looking to see what the actual, because we hadn't gotten a budget spreadsheet with that information. I've reviewed it, I have no questions. I'm okay with it?
All right.
So I don't know if there were any other specific...
That's why we invited Don here, in case anyone had any questions on that worksheet.
Right. I just wanted to see some of the breakdowns, other than just the DRA form.
Oh, okay.
That was my only request.
Do you want me to spend a few minutes on our process, in terms of what we do?
I think... I think it might be beneficial for folks who are watching on GTV, just so they understand what a default budget is, and when they're, you know, going to polls.
Yeah, the legal responsibility for...
Sure. Sue, can I give these to you?
Sure.
These are just the statutory language.
Thank you.
Oh, we already have those, I'm not sure. The statute provides, in RSA forty thirteen, it's Roman numeral nine, what you will see in there, and in my opinion, the legislature did this deliberately, and I will be brief on this, they set up what is basically a framework, in terms of the basic procedures, they put in a few rules in terms of what, you know, how it's supposed to work. I believe that they deliberately did not put in a lot of detail, particularly in the area of exactly what goes into it and what doesn't. I believe they did that deliberately, because that is established at the local level. Ultimately, of course, the board is responsible for it, we as staff members, of course, do the nuts and bolts work in terms of compiling it. Basically, what we do, to be brief, is we, what I do is to pull out the current year budget, which of course is the starting point, and most of the lines, we're simply taking the current year's budget numbers and bringing them forward, because, and you'll read this in the statute, it's basically the previous operating budget. There is a little bit of wiggle room for contractual items, I think you all know this already. There is room to either adjust up or down, depending on what they are, and following that process, basically what I do is to confer with the department heads, because the department heads have more in-depth knowledge than I do in terms of their individual budget lines, and once in a while, there's an item that I didn't realize was contractual, turns out to be, so, or maybe the other way around. So there's some give and take. The point I'm trying to make is it's a team effort. Myself, the department heads, of course, Sue and I talk about items, lines, totals, try to agree what I come up with with Sue's numbers, and there's a lot of give and take in the process, is the point I'm trying to make here. The final product, of course, is the DRA form that Selectman Campisano mentioned, which gets posted with the warrant, and the, with the warrant and, of course, the regular budget, which the DRA has a new format of. I'd love to go over that with you, Sue, at some point. They, the three documents get posted together no later than the last Monday in January, which is two weeks from today, and that's about it. I mean, that's the short blurb on how, what we do, how we come up with it, and so forth.
So example for folks who may be watching, we're talking about things like increases in healthcare, increases in insurance, increases under collective bargaining agreement that has been negotiated, those sorts of things that are, just so folks understand.
Any bonds or notes we have, if they go up or down, whatever direction.
Sure, yes.
I'm not controlled, some of it. Yeah, a lot of it's outside of our control.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Don? Good to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Sweet, you're welcome.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.
So that was here, right?
So, is there a motion to authorize a chairman, is it just one signature on that? I don't have it in front of me. The DRA form, Don, is it all of them?
I'll make a motion to authorize signature on the default budget.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? Allos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I have a question for the board regarding, we don't have the budget committee's budget, but they're meeting tomorrow night to finalize the town budget, but through our process, our budgeting process, we have revised numbers, benefits lines, and I'm wondering, should we make them the same for the selectmen and the budget committee now that the healthcare, health fear is over, and everyone's made their selections? Should those numbers be the same? Any questions on that?
I believe they should be, I mean, those are the final numbers.
That's what I would say, if those are the final numbers, I would imagine, the ones we want to use.
I just need your authorization to change that line throughout the selection budget.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
Alan did.
There's no Donald here, they can fall off, yeah, I'll second it.
So we got a motion here, and a second over here. Is any further discussion on that motion?
No.
Allos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And who made the second? It was Mark?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Now, Sue, those numbers, those numbers will be available.
They are in the budget that I emailed you, but I'm going to change it in the selectmen column, so whatever was in the budget committee column for that will now also appear in those benefit lines in the selectmen's column.
Okay. Can you just make sure I have a copy of that for tomorrow night?
I will.
Or will you, will you be here tomorrow night, or?
I will be here tomorrow night. I can run out of it.
Okay, just so that there's any questions.
The other line that I changed for the budget committee is, and it was too late to do it in the selectmen's budget, because it happened after the fact, when we got the rates for workers' compensation, we challenged two classifications for two employees, and our insurer reviewed it and agreed with us with the classifications, with the wrong classification, which reduced those lines.
Is that the trash?
No, it was planning, the planner.
Oh, okay.
And it was also, I think it was Carl's.
Carl, it was Carl's.
Carl's, yes.
Supervisor.
Right, so they're more office-related, and they were giving them the higher rate of being on the street all the time. So they have agreed to that. I put it as the revised numbers in the budget committee column, but I need a motion from you to change your workers' comp lines in those two departments.
Make a motion.
There you go.
So moved, was Phil and Mark, I'll give it the second.
Any discussion? Allos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And good work to Linda Moody for challenging that and getting the results she did.
Thank you.
Going to re-look at it much, this year in all, is it low? Just curious.
I have so many numbers rattling around up here, I'd have to look it up.
Mine stayed pretty level last few years, so I'm just...
Yeah, I think the mod rate, there are three different parts to workers' comp rates when they set them, and our mod rate went up slightly, but it's still very favorable modification rate.
Good.
Okay, next, I want a discussion about the bond hearing on Thursday night. Chief O'Brien, I understand that after a very brief presentation by one of the members of the board of selectmen, you're going to present the details of the fire department upgrades?
I will take care of that for you.
Okay.
Sorry, hard work on it.
All right.
I'll make a presentation, I'll be brief, hopefully.
The budget committee has requested that the board of selectmen make presentations relative to the special articles that are proposed to be funded out of the unexpended fund balance. So I'd like to have reaction from the board. I think that's appropriate, they've asked that, let's see why not. Be a good dress rehearsal for the deliberative session, if nothing else. So I want to talk about which members of the board would like to speak to each of these, and I'd like to sort of share the wealth, if we could. Yes?
I will not be available on Thursday night, I have a previous engagement that was planned since November, so I will not be there.
Then we'll get you out of the deliberative session.
No, no, I'll be there, at that day.
All right, so let's just go down through these and see.
One, one, pause. What's that? You're on page two?
I'm on page two.
Here's the revised warrant, and they're in there also. It starts with the ones from unassigned fund balance, start at Article twenty-one. We will have some renumbering, well, this reflects the numbers as of today, the numbering of these articles.
Sue, do you have one more?
That's with twenty, I'm sorry, Article twenty.
Starts at Article twenty.
Another one? Yep.
Article twenty is eighty thousand dollars for reconstructing the Pleasant Street Bridge sidewalk. I'm just going to ask if there's one here, if you want to step forward, if not, I have some thoughts on, I'll volunteer myself. Alan, that's a construction project, that would seem to be right up your alley.
It is, I would need to know what he's actually going to do there, I mean, I don't know what the actual plan is, if I had an actual plan.
Well, I think it's important, that's why I'm trying to go through this tonight, so you can talk to Carl or whoever to get the specific facts, you know, have a discussion so that, you know, we can present, present it articulately. Mr. Chair? Yes?
If I could suggest a wording change there?
On twenty, yep.
Where it says, for the purpose of reconstructing the Pleasant Street Bridge sidewalk, I would suggest adding, and the underlying bridge structure? Because it's not only the, no, they did the bridge structure for the road. The sidewalk has a separate bridge structure that was attached after the original bridge was put in, and that structure needs to be replaced, it's not just...
Underlying support structure.
That would be fine as well, to indicate it's more than just a sidewalk.
Right. Okay, the underlying support structures. So Alan, is that something you're comfortable with?
Yeah, I can talk to Carl and see what I can find out, what kind of idea is going on now, what's this, when's this for?
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
When you talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah.
He'll be available, I'll get to him tomorrow.
Next one is seventy-three thousand dollars for the detention pond reconstructions. I don't mind feeling that one, I've got a lot of experience in detention pond design and construction, as well as the water quality impacts associated with that, how it all ties in MS four and all of that, so I'd be happy to...
And that was tied to two specific ones?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Did you find it?
I would also suggest for that one, that between for the purpose of detention pond reconstru, for the purpose of, name the two.
Is that Tyler Drive and Maple Ave?
Tyler Drive and Maple Ave Detention Pond Reconstruction.
So they're specific, it's not general.
Well, I think the Maple Ave is referred to as a treatment soil, is it not?
So maybe the correct wording would be the Tyler Drive Detention Pond and the Maple Ave Treatment Soil.
I have to check his email.
Now, he says Tyler Drive and Maple Ave Ponds.
We can check with Carl on that.
I think that's the drainage design, I don't think there's a pond there, but I can...
Yeah, there's another place we're referring to. Yeah, and the table he sent was the two projects he identified for year two thousand and thirteen, which of course have not been put off to two thousand and fourteen, the Tyler Drive Detention Pond and the Maple Ave Smith Road Treatment Soil, is how they're referred to as in the description. Any other comments on that article? Article twenty-two is the forty thousand dollars to install the ADA compliant...
I'll follow you.
Okay, but I'd like Nick to do it at the deliberative session, though, did you all research on it?
Sure.
So you're going to do it Thursday night?
Yeah, I don't...
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Again, just a recommended wording change, prior to install, something to the effect to replace an existing obsolete stair lift and install, or...
That does not meet current standard or...
Right, something to the description that we're just not adding something, we are replacing something that does not, no longer functions, a non-functioning, or...
Okay, function's just not what we need nowadays.
Replace an existing obsolete lift and to install.
Right, because it basically doesn't comply with today's requirement.
Exactly.
Yes, for generations' health.
Okay, Article twenty-three is thirty-five thousand dollars for the public library.
And there was a request from the library to add some language in here, after the painting and repairs, to the exterior of the public library.
That's what this says.
Yep. So you made that change?
All those are added?
Yeah.
Oh, I added them, okay. Yeah, I'm going by the one in the book, I changed them today, so I just wanted to make sure you were okay with that change.
Okay, and the library, that's yours, Alan, do you want to speak to that one as well?
I can, I think, looking for thirty-five thousand dollars, just the exterior, I know what needs, it's pretty...
Well, let me ask questions like what part of the exterior?
From the soft side.
Yeah, after the meeting, I have the whole handout, the CIP with the pictures of the structure and everything.
That'd be great.
Article twenty-four, seventy-five thousand dollars for the server virtualization project at the police department. Is that article read okay for everyone, Article twenty-four?
Do we need any reference?
Maybe we should put some common language in there, so people know what they're talking about, virtualization?
Yeah. That's what I was going to suggest, because perhaps with a little bit more description of...
For this?
Yeah.
Let me get some layman's terms, some IT, who...
Just going to say, maybe Neil can provide some.
It sounds like a hologram to me.
Yeah.
A virtualization.
No, yeah, but that's what it seems like, it's something to do with the cloud or something.
It is a simple backup that will be real time and will take minutes if you go down, rather than weeks, to restore.
Okay, well, just some...
Well, yeah, I'll find out what the layman's term would be for that from Neil.
Article twenty-five is the self-contained breathing apparatus for fire departments.
Sure.
And does that wording, that article read okay?
Yeah, I'll sit with the chief tomorrow. Chief, you and I get together and finalize whatever.
Article twenty-six, hundred thousand dollars for the fire department capital reserve fund. Mark, you want to tackle that one as well?
Sure.
Article twenty-seven is twenty thousand dollars for Gostown Main Street program. I don't mind tackling that one, I've only got one so far, so...
Oh, we need to, this is a cut and paste error, after Article twenty-nine, that is not a petition this year, that was a petition last year.
So submitted by petition goes away?
Yes, take that out.
Okay, articles are back up to Article twenty-eight, it's twenty thousand dollars for the Crispin's House. Would like to...
Sure.
Any issues with the wording as it's written?
No, I was going to get ahold of...
Albaines?
Albaines, yes.
In fact, if it's gone away, it doesn't pass, she'll make the presentation for you. Probably just need to introduce it.
Yep, I'll give them a call.
I imagine I'll do the same with Robbie if she wants to.
Yep, yep.
Give the details, I'll just introduce the article.
For any one's petition articles, I just want to bring to the board's attention that the supervisors checked those meeting tonight to verify the signatures for which one, let's see, Article thirty-one, and thirty-two we're expecting in tomorrow. They sent the language to me, so I could place it in here for you for tonight, but we're expecting that one in tomorrow night, so the supervisors will be reconvening to verify those signatures.
Okay, so we've got Article twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two are all submitted by petition.
No, twenty-nine was not.
Oh, that's right, twenty-nine was not.
Twenty-nine was not. Let me run upstairs and see if they're done, doing signatures.
Twenty-nine, which one, it tends to be one in your, the number's changed by one, so if you're only by the handout tonight, it's twenty-eight that was not submitted by a petition article.
Oh, you're right, of course, twenty-nine is by petition.
So twenty-nine, okay, all right.
That's not an appropriation article.
It's this one, it's the Crispin's House that was not submitted by a petition.
Oh, I'm sorry, you passed it.
But twenty-nine, which is the speed limit one, that was a petition.
Yeah, it was, right.
Okay, so that is...
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-eight was not submitted by...
Right, and the reason for the difference between what's in your packet and this is we have no collective bargaining agreements to bring forward to town meeting this year. We had thought there might be one, but it was not ratified.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, a little later we can discuss it, but we did, I know, Sue, you had a placeholder for, we had had a discussion with some Penarville residents regarding message boards, LED signs, and I believe you had a placeholder for that. I met this weekend, I'll go into that a little later, but I contacted the school board, they are not going to have another meeting until the twentieth, so there's no way that they could put something on the ballot, and I know this was supposed to be a...
Joint effort.
A joint effort between the two, so I don't know if, you know, we can go forward with anything at this time. with anything at this time, simply because we don't have, it happened so late, we didn't meet, we didn't get estimates until the second of January, we didn't meet until this past weekend, so unfortunately, I think the clock has run out, I don't know how we can-
So it's just not FYI?
Yeah, but I'll go over the information later, I brought everything with me.
Well, we'll go over it now if you want, or-
No, we can do that under old business.
Okay. What else, Ryan, you have?
No, so with those changes, I am, I can give a draft of this to the budget committee, they're meeting tomorrow night.
Anything else you need from us at this point? Should that wrap it up?
That's it, are you okay with the numbering and the order of the, the bond? And like I said, it has to be the first one and then, and our next one's the operating budget. And then I did all the ones, I believe, from fund balance next, six that were assigned fund balance. And the petitions I did as they came in, so they're in the order that they arrived.
My only suggestion would be maybe all these petition-worn articles that are appropriation articles, put those first, so that we're dealing with all appropriations first.
We can do that.
And then just the standard petition articles after that.
Sound good, Sue?
That's good. All right, so we got through the warrant, default budget, and we already discussed the bond here, so we're good. Done my presentation, thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to the selectmen's discussion. Committee reports, planning board.
What about the bond here?
Did I miss something?
Are we doing a bond, discussion on the bond here, or is that later?
We did that earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did that, yeah, I didn't check it out, sorry.
I know, we went, kinda went out of order.
Not the first time we've lost it, but I'm sure.
Last evening, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, so, committee reports, planning board, Phil?
How much time do you have?
I saw it on tape, so.
Well, the meeting went from seven o'clock, we got out, finished at ten minutes to twelve, and Brian Rose wanted to pull the grass for the town report.
Did you take them?
At midnight? A quarter to twelve, ten minutes to twelve.
Highlight for us?
Sixteen articles, right? Very full.
Let me work backwards, it might be easier.
Sure.
All the articles that were proposed by the planning board have been approved.
Recommended.
Recommended, right. Been recommended to be, will be placed on the ballot as recommended. In brief, on the petition articles, I'll try to be as brief as I can. The mashed road zoning, Commissioner Holden, Holden was there, from the county commissioners. She stated that they had met, they had discussed this, and she was there on the commissioner's behalf, to listen, to speak about their concerns, and to report back to the commission, and that they would have their discussion and decide whether or not to go forward with a protest petition. There was seventy signatures on the petition to rezone all the properties from the Manchester Line to Henry Bridge Road, that front mashed road to commercial. Several things came out of the discussion, number one was that the fact that you changed the commercial from commercial industrial flex zone does not prevent the mixed-use development that people seem to suggest that it would. The mixed use is still there, and actually, it's a, I believe, higher concentration than in the commercial industrial flex. There were many, well, several residents that were in the affected properties that raised concerns that nobody contacted them and asked them their opinion about rezoning their property to commercial, they were upset about that, and they, there were several people that were here the last time, and a couple that had filed a protest petition in the back, when I say the prior time also. And concern came up by one of them, that they thought that it wasn't fair or right that their property could be placed on the ballot to be rezoned without their knowledge, consent, or signature, and yet, in order to do a protest petition, they have to go out and work and get signatures from other people that are in the affected zone, and they just, that, that was, to them, a disparity in the how, why, and they just didn't, it didn't make sense to them, and they thought it was very unfair. Another item that came up was the fact that the properties that are residential use and have mortgages as a residential use, if those properties are zoned commercial, they, especially ones that are residential going to commercial, well, when they go to commercial, the residential use is a non-conforming use, and being a non-conforming use, they would have much difficulty getting refinancing if they went to refinance their mortgage, because it's a non-conforming use. And Chris Nada, who is a mortgage originator and sits on the planning board, also confirmed that, and he said that this, because they had, they've been getting even stricter, the requirements for finances have gotten even stricter, and that anything outside of the box, everything needs to be in a simple box, so when they go to do the mortgage apps, and everything, everything meets all the criteria, when you get something that doesn't fit the criteria, the red flags come up, and you, issues come up. So I guess the fact that there were only three signatures of properties that were on mashed road, and out of those three signatures, I know of at least one, possibly more, were on mashed road, but they weren't in the affected zone, they were properties outside of the affected properties. When all was said and done, I made a motion not to recommend, it was seconded, and it passed seven unanimously, to be placed on a ballot as not recommended. And I think outside of the meeting, the hearing though, I think that it's something that the board of selectmen should also look at to continue its goal of economic development, because it seems to be the, some people seem to think that just by zoning properties a certain way, that you're, you're improving the, the commercial base. And Alan Eaton was there and made a comment about it, and, and about there needing to be a plan, and there was, there was quite a bit of discussion from members of the public and members of the planning board about there needing to be a plan, and that's something that the board of selectmen prior had tried to do, in formulating a plan. But everything needs to be looked at as a whole, and you need to include the property owners into the plan, so that everybody can formulate a plan, and everybody, and probably not every single person is gonna be on board, but overwhelming majority for the best of the community on that covered plan. But Alan Eaton made some very good comments about planning and following the master plan along with, along with that. So with that, if there's any questions on that one, I'll move on to the next one. The next one was to rezone a piece of property to, from residential to R S B O D. That was not recommended, it, it was shown us how it was, is that basically would be one piece of property that would be surround, that would be next to a commercial, but would also a but residential property, and would be one piece by itself, and it would be spot zoning. So that was not recommended, that was a four to three, not to recommend. And the final petition one was to rezone a piece of residential property to commercial, that piece of property abuts, is on Daniel Palmer Road, abuts Country Squires, which is zoned commercial, and it's across from the Cody Industrial Park, which is all, that side is basically all industrial. It abuts a small piece of residential on one side, and the next piece of property is the Jehovah Witness Church, which I believe it's a special exception, church can operate in any zone with a special exception, I believe is what, what they have. So that's not really spot zoning, it's a continuation of the zone that, the large commercial that it abuts, and it's across the street from the industrial, and that was, would be placed on a ballot as recommended, and I believe that was unanimous vote, I'm sure it was unanimous vote, so. Any questions on that? And along with that, as a selectmen's rep that sits on there, and it was mentioned by a member of the public before, that I did bring up the issue of the, of the code of conduct. And I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm kind of in a, I don't know exactly how to say, kind of, kind of, well, but you're kind of between a rock and a hard place or a squeeze, because you, you're talking about code of conduct, you're talking about public, a public hearing at a public, you know, public meeting, at a public hearing at a public meeting, and I don't know where the line is drawn between a non-public issue of, let's say, something affecting the reputation of a person, not a member of the board, or public information, right to know, code of conduct, to be open and, you know, transparent. So there, there's some, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of bite my tongue and refrain from that, because I don't wanna go too far over one line, but then again, I don't wanna appear that I'm trying to hide anything.
I have a question along those lines, yes, I was just looking at that, that portion, and it, it talks about matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself. So, does that mean that if you are a member of an elected body, that you are not afforded? Or does it have to be a member of the public body that is discussing the issue?
I thought it was the one discussing the issue.
And that's the way I, I'm not a member of this board. And the reason why I say that also, while we're on this, I mean, I'm not trying to, but I was contacted by a resident, and a resident gave me something that they downloaded off the internet, that they were upset about, because the document that they gave me is not consistent with something that was said, or two things that were said at that public hearing. They wanted to bring it to my attention regarding recusal and conflict of interest outside, also, part of it's with the code of conduct, but part of it also is more directed to the, to the issue, and like, again, I'm, I'm, I, I don't, I wanna make sure I don't cross the lines, and I feel like I'm right on this line as to being open, transparent in a public meeting versus the reputation of a person, not a member of the board, so.
Is there any discussion that we can have on some of the topics that were brought up tonight, not specifically related to that meeting, but just, for instance, I know there was one issue that was brought up, who has the authority to engage the town attorney? And does an individual, we have a discussion along those lines without specifically referring back to an individual, or?
Well, I think there were no issues brought up in the ninety-one A request we received tonight, that we need to research and get some, some information on, to get it back to the requister. Is that something you can have time to look at between now and Thursday, Sue?
Yes, I can answer question one, do the municipal records reflect whether or not Mr. Heikel has provided a copy of the town of Goffstown's code of conduct? If there is a copy of such record, does the elected appointed official sign an official document, acknowledge, or receipt of the code of conduct? The official who receives it does not sign, the official who delivers it, distributes it to the person, logs it in at the town clerk's office. So yes, in 2011, Karen Leclair did provide Mr. Heikel with a copy of the code of conduct. Question two, and there's a copy of that in the town clerk's office, if you'd like it. Question two, please provide documentation through a vote of the planning board that authorized Mr. Heikel to contact the town attorney at the town's expense for his consultation. Individual members have no authority, they derive their authority from the board they serve on, if there was an official vote, please provide me the date of the meeting minutes in my review. There was no official vote of the planning board, there was a written request for recusal from a petitioner, and when staff received that request, they reached out to the town attorney on how to handle that, and the town attorney suggested that he come before the planning board in a non-meeting to have a discussion about recusal laws.
Did that take place?
That did not take place.
Okay, did not.
Instead, the planning board chairman called the town attorney.
Why did it not take place?
I have no idea. You know that we, staff works with the chairman of the committee to facilitate what's going to be on the agenda and issues such as this, and that was not favored by the chairman, I assume. And instead, he said he would call the town attorney.
So even what I hearing, that the chairman was contacted to have the town attorney, and he didn't want the town attorney to come, and instead, he called?
Right.
And that, that conversation did occur?
That conversation did occur, I do not know what transpired between the two of them, so I can't, and there's nothing in writing. But I can say-
But you've confirmed with Drescher that the conversation did occur?
Yes, Brian did.
So I guess that brings up one of the questions that were, that you would have to research, is one, does attorney-client privilege hold if he as the chairman of the planning board was discussing that issue with the town attorney? And if he was doing it as a, an individual, not as the chairman, it probably would hold, but then, who is being charged for that time? In other words, is it being charged to the town as a town request? In which case, would the town, the board of selectmen, be privy to that discussion? Or is Mr. Heikel paying those charges as personal individual?
Seem to me- Will you get that information from Attorney Drescher?
Yes.
Question, question?
No, I'll hold up on the question. Well, the question is, is Attorney Drescher billing for his time, and this follow-up is who's he billing?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to assume he's billing the town, because the planning board chairman called him regarding the recusal laws.
Okay, let's just confirm that. Okay, let's just confirm that.
But, you know, I think a good point came up during public comment that another training opportunity. We've had right-to-know law training for our elected and appointed officials. I think recusal law, and it may be different for layman's boards and this board, but I think that's another good training opportunity and another subject for an all-boards meeting.
I would agree. I think you're right. Okay, so, yes.
To also clarify, if we can find out, is there a distinction? Because there are two different issues. One was our Code of Conduct, but then at the planning board, there were some public comments as to the quasi-judiciary standard, that the juror standard that planning board members, and making up their mind prior. And I'm just wondering if we can get clarification, does that hold for just planning board hearings when you're hearing applications?
Correct, this is more of a legislative function.
So if we could get, if they could put that as well as that distinction, because there are some individuals that think that juror standard applies all the time for a planning board member.
No, this is more, this was regarding an advisory recommendation for legislative bodies, so I wouldn't think it's the same standard. But I can ask the town attorney that.
Yeah, can you just clarify with the town attorney that, you know, he was aware that somebody's going to be charged, and who he assumed is going to be the town, or I guess that relates back to the original question?
Yes.
Who's he billing?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so it looks like question three, still not current question four, does it?
We checked the rules of procedure also for the planning board to see if it addressed this issue, and it didn't.
Yeah.
And I don't think ours does either, so, you know, we may want to look to our rules of procedure when we readjust them after town meeting, whether or not we want to have language in there about legal opinions and requiring a vote of the board if a member of the board wants to talk to the town attorney.
So are you also going to ask Attorney Drescher what the answer is to question four relative to your?
Yes, that was part of next. Does attorney-client privilege hold? And if so, who is it between here and who's being billed for? Was the second part of, I think, your question.
All right, I can catch you. So, thanks.
Clarification? Sue, those rules of procedure would just be for this board, though?
Right, but the planning board has their own also.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, I didn't find it in, I looked, we looked at theirs, and then I looked at ours, and it's not addressed in either.
So it should be in both.
But, you know, we've always operated that any action by any individual member of this board requires a vote of the full board. That's how we've always operated.
But I have a question.
Yes, sure.
When you say it's the plan, the planning board is responsible for their own rules of procedure.
Mm-hmm.
And when it comes to how the planning board operates, as far as their meetings are concerned, the length of their meetings, and how they run their meetings is one thing, but another board and how they respond to the town attorney, when they aren't the body, the board, that pays the bill. The bill is paid by or overseen by the board of selectmen. So it would seem to me that somehow that's something, the controlling authority on that should be from the board of selectmen, because.
Isn't it, if I could?
Yeah.
When someone has agreed with the decision at the planning board, and they bring legal action, they bring it to the next level, doesn't this board have to approve that action? Don't we have to?
Whether or not it goes to court.
Right.
Which is basically authorizing the town attorney to take that case on.
And to engage.
So does the planning board even have the authority to go to the town attorney? Or is that a function of the board of selectmen?
Well, I would say no. I mean, anytime you're spending town monies, I mean, you can't do that cart launch, just pick up the phone and start billing attorney fees without, without this board approving of it. I mean, we're talking about.
A lot of boards.
Departments buying water without permission. Now we got people going out getting legal advice without getting approval.
Well, you spend taxpayers' money, so you need to, you need to account to somebody.
Absolutely, somebody's going to be held accountable.
That's right.
It's not this board, we don't know anything of it. Anything else on that? Make you comfortable with that?
I think Sue's got a little. Have all those been addressed?
Yeah, I believe so.
The only thing that hasn't been addressed is the nature of the conversation, but that will be under the attorney-client privilege when we find out who the client is.
And I guess since we're on that subject, and I brought up the document that was given to me by a resident, I have that document. I haven't given it to the board. It's not a public document at that point, but I want to make sure the resident knows that I have it and I apprise the board that I do have that. I'm going to, I guess, hold it unless the board wants me to give it to them and be a public document, or.
Is it addressed to the board? Who's, I'm not sure.
No, it was given to me to make me aware of issues about the public hearing.
You mean the way it's being conducted?
No, it's a public document that was downloaded off of a website that has information, contrary to information that was, again, I'm on that, I don't want to disparage somebody with that, but it's indirect of things that were presented by members of the public, but what I have is, appears to be a different document than what they mentioned, but it's on the same subject.
What I would say is, I guess it's privileged information directed to you, and, I mean, if you feel it necessary, or that it warrants the need to come back to us, I would say that you go back to that person and ask that person if he gives you permission to share it with this board, and if that, if that is.
Well, they did. I have permission, but I was just.
What I'm saying is, I'm just concerned.
About the violation.
You know, I.
It borders on.
I don't know if it does or not, and I don't want to, I don't want to be, I don't, I don't know if it's something I should hold, if we. Well, in general, my opinion is when a citizen requests that any one of us bring an issue before the full board, we're obligated to do that, and we should do that.
I'll give it to the town administration, they can make copies, and it'll be a public document.
Okay, anything else on the right-to-know request? I think Sue's got it well in hand and knows what we're going to get, or what we need to get.
I'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Well, that was the committee report for the planning board. How about one for the budget committee?
The budget committee did meet. We reviewed numbers and figures again. We debated the request for the fire truck, or I should say the forestry truck, or slash rapid response vehicle. It was called many, many names that night, and it was given many, many different titles. Members of the committee felt that what we had would suffice, and I guess through a lengthy debate, money is there, it's going to stay there, and it's going to be upcoming this year for, to be voted on in the budget. The other thing we talked about at great length is the removal of the, I forget how many thousands of dollars it was from the salt line for the salt budget. I kind of explained that I feel the chairman of the, not chairman, but the, Kyle Querim has issues in being able to keep up with the way the winter's been going, and he fears not this, not this part of the winter, but the next November, December, to see if the salt channel, have enough salt to finish the year so we can get into the budget. We discussed about that. It was voted again, and it failed again to bring the money, the money back up to, up to the line where it would be comfortable enough. We've had a pretty rough winter compared to the normal winters we've had in the past, and the salt line is in jeopardy right now, and there's going to be some deficits on the salt line, I guarantee you. We're having a meeting tomorrow night to hopefully come up with final numbers so that we can move forward, and Chairman Carlos Adams was with me as well, and if I miss anything, call us. I mean, by all means, go ahead and step in, but I think.
You hit the big ones.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
The fire truck and the salt line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? All right, old business to come before the board.
Yes, I mentioned earlier the message boards that we had come before the board with a request from some residents, probably back in November, I think it was, when it first, when it first came up. And we had gotten some estimates, when I say we, the residents and myself, they reached out to some vendors. If you recall, we had looked at various locations, and we were trying to find one that would provide ease of communication to the sign, the lowest cost as far as installing a structure, and we had, and I believe I talked to the board about approaching the school board and utilizing the existing sign at Bartlett Elementary School, because currently there's a fixed message board there, a changeable sign board. So we've gotten some estimates, there's some structural work that needs to be done, there's some corrosion, but all together with the sign, the replacement of the structure that is corroded, running of a new higher amperage electrical circuit, a variable message board, very similar to the new one that's at the car wash, the one at Mr. Saret's across from Bartlett School. That size board would run approximately about $30,000. That was, that was the estimate. That's installation, that's everything. But a lot higher than the, you know, two to 3,000 we were originally talking about. But that would include wireless networking, software, everything that would be needed to run the sign. It could be programmed for certain periods of the time, school pickup and drop off, it's running school-based messages. It can have certain dates where you say, on this date, so many days before a public hearing, or weeks you want that particular message to run. So as I mentioned, I reached out to the chairman of the school board, and she said that unfortunately they're not meeting again until the 20th, so they don't have time to put, to vote and put something together for tomorrow evening. And just her gut feeling was, with the number of articles that they have currently and their desire to keep them to a minimum, they probably would not add something, be inclined to add something. But that was her opinion, that was not the board's opinion. So my suggestion is we put this off to the side now, and then pick up again this year and see if we can work on something going forward.
I appreciate you taking the effort to work with those folks, Nick. Any other old business? Any new business?
Just the issue that we had.
Oh, that's old business, yep.
Talked about last week. We had discussed the food and beverage purchases, who you were going to talk with department heads, I believe.
We, I did talk to the department heads. DPW's water is not drinkable, so they would want to keep their spring water. I had a question from the town clerk regarding the election workers, because we buy food.
The DPW facility doesn't have potable water in it?
It tests really high in something, he said.
The Long Island City Water, that address we're.
They have a well.
There are a well there.
They have a well. So it's either getting a water conditioning unit to filter out that, to make it drinkable, or spring water. Town clerk inquired whether or not, you know, you would continue to buy food for the election workers on election day. You know, there's a lot of questions coming up here at town hall. As I said, every public building is required to have water available for the public. Here, we also want it for our volunteers, and staff uses it also, but it's co-mingle.
Nick, I knew you had thoughts on this.
Yes, I did. I did, I reworked.
One other one was coffee is integral, and it's probably less expensive to have coffee for our police officers and pay a deductible in a cruiser accident.
What?
And pay the $1,000 deductible for cruiser accident.
Come on.
My first one for Sue. So I went back and I, there should be one for everyone, going back to Sue. So I just, I reworked, and I think I anticipated, which you had gotten from the town clerk's office, I reworked my motion to basically state that department funds should, shall not be used to purchase food or beverages for employees except those purchased and provided to election workers during elections, or town employees engaged in emergency operations. Bottled water may be purchased for employees during those periods when potable water is not available, and requests for food or beverage purchases for special events/functions shall be made in advance to the board of selectmen, and such approvals shall include a maximum spending limit.
Has anyone done the numbers on how much this is of a $20 million budget?
I could.
Yeah.
That's a good question, and I think it goes beyond the dollar value, because I don't think a $200 bacon and eggs breakfast is going to break the budget, or a $400 promotional reception, or, you know, the coffee purchases. But I think it speaks to the mindset that we talked about a long time ago when we were doing our budgeting. We ask our department heads to come forward and give us a lean budget. What can you do without, what can you not do without, the must haves, that I think it's necessary? And then we process weekly warrants, and we see departments that purchase monogram pens to promote their department image, or, as I mentioned, some of these other purchases. I think it goes to the culture that how do.
How do you ask me for more money?
In the economic situation that we're in, where we're trying to watch every single dollar, if those things are not considered luxuries and we can do without, what else in that budget? It's a culture, it's a mindset that we need to cultivate, that every dollar is important, whether it's 10 cents, a dollar, $10, or $100. And the little dollar amounts add up. They add up across each department and across all of the departments. So I think you're right, $200 breakfast in the realm of a $20 million budget isn't a difference. But when a resident comes and says, what are you using my tax dollars for? I think that's an important issue to consider. And by no means am I shortchanging, or trying to say our employees don't deserve things like that. Our employees do a very good job. Town employees do wonderful jobs. And five or 10 years ago, in a different economic climate, it was perfectly fine to do things like that. But our town employees perform every day to their highest level. We, in return, provide them with safe working conditions, a living wage, generous benefits, job security. So I don't want it misconstrued that I think the employees don't deserve it, or that it's.
Thank you, thank you for saying that, because I think that's how some employees are feeling.
Well, it's not, and that's not my intent. But I think we need to develop that culture that we have to scrutinize every dollar, down to the last penny.
A question? Does this include coffee for volunteers that are on committees here?
There's nothing in there that says volunteers.
So that means that there could be coffee here for volunteers?
I'll leave that to the board. My motion is, as it states, that food or beverages shall not be purchased for employees. I mean, we can come up with straw arguments, you know, dozens of them to, you know, the what-if this, and the what-if that, and I think it's fairly straightforward.
I don't think, I don't think some of those things are straw arguments, I think some of those things are, are things that happen. I mean...
I, I think, and I understand where you're coming from, Nick, because this is not allowable at the state level. I can tell you right now, we don't pay for water, we don't pay for coffee, we don't pay for, for soft drinks. My other concern is, it's not consistent across departments. I mean, if we're providing it for, and I'll just use the example, I'm not picking on the police department, for the police department, we should provide it for the, the fire department, the Department of Public Works, and every other town employee, Town Hall employees, to make it equitable across the board. So now you start compounding this, and before you know it, it does become a significant amount of money on a recurring basis. I've worked in, we've all worked in situations where you've got a coffee kitty, you want coffee, you pitch in 50 cents or whatever, and you pour a cup out of the pot, and that money goes to buy the coffee and supplies to replenish them. And the same can be done with bottled water, or soft drinks for that matter.
I think you're right, I mean, there's other organizations, and there's always a kitty, you come in if you want a soda, as you can, if you want a coffee, it's, that's what it is.
We had a soda machine here, but they took it out because we, we don't have that much volume, so they...
Soda got outdated and...
Right, I remember that, I was here with that.
Yeah.
But we, we did...
Also kept you money and didn't give you drink, but...
You, you talk about small dollar amounts, we, during our budget hearings, we had department heads who argued against us cutting $500 from a line.
Right.
Or, and, and these purchases would equal those. So, so there is a lack of priority in that, in where those dollars are being used.
You know, I would absolutely support the concept of purchasing, purchasing refrigerator or refrigerators, so that when staff brings in their own soda or bottled water from home, there's a place where they can store it.
I think they're, most departments do.
We have one here. And we gave our little one too, proximally, I think.
There you go.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm concerned because I'm getting the feeling that we have department heads that spend hundreds of dollars a month for this, and I'm hearing $300, $200 for an egg breakfast, I'm hearing $400 for this. I mean, I, I, I don't see these things happening.
There's an invoice in there right now, $188 for eggs and bacon and...
Well, why don't you find out what it was for? I mean, if you, if, if we have an employee that's worked 27 years, and an employee is retiring, I mean, I don't see why the department that he works for can't have something for him.
And there's, this makes an allowance for that, you would, the department head would come to the board...
But, but then let's make it clear, if this makes the allowance for it, and that's what those expenditures are for, then we're not really saving any money. What this is, this is just something to look at and say, gee, the Board of Selectmen is really saving a lot of money, because we're not gonna allow the, the town departments to spend money on the town employees anymore. If the things that they're buying are acceptable, if the only difference is they gotta come and get preapproval, how much money are we saving, $100 a year? We don't know, nobody's done the math. We're just saying there's an invoice in there for that, do you know what that invoice is? I've done a little bit checking, and I know what they are. And I'll tell you, it's a sad day in Goffstown when the departments can't have what, what that was for. It's a sad day in Goffstown when the depart, my police department, and I'm not gonna be on the board anymore, when I'm a regular citizen, that my police department, officers can't come into headquarters at 3:00 in the morning and get a cup of coffee, Dunkin' Donuts is closed, Goffstown wants to roll its sidewalks up at 11:00 at night, and where they gonna get a cup of coffee? They gotta go and they gotta put 50 cents, you know, I just...
Yes.
Phil, I work for a municipality, and for years, we used to provide coffee and donuts when we had public meetings.
I'm not talking about donuts, I'm just talking about coffee.
I'm just saying, that was done away with years ago. When we have an employee who's retiring, we all get together...
Pitch in.
And we say, you know what, that guy's retiring, we'd like to give them a party, we wanna get a cake, and we all pitch in, and we, and we do that. And that happens at all levels, from the lowest level, firefighters, all the way up to the top level of administration. The days of the city using municipal funds for us for food or beverages are done, and they have been for years, and it's not something that's unusual. I just find it hard to be able to justify to a taxpayer who comes in and says, you know, I'm having a very difficult time paying for my taxes, or I'm being foreclosed on, or I haven't been able to pay my taxes, and...
I don't want the public to get the wrong idea that we're spending their money on all this food. For example, at Town Hall, we have an annual Christmas party, it's potluck, everyone brings in something...
Exactly.
And no taxpayer money is used. When we have department head meetings, one department head takes a turn and buys the coffee and donuts and brings them...
And, and that's what happens at the fire department, the guys provide their own coffee when they have a meal, because they have to, they're there during the day, they all chip in, they plan their menu, they chip in, they get their food, there aren't taxpayer dollars, and, and I think that goes to the chairman's comment, that that should be across the board.
And one for all of us.
So, I guess, I need a little clarification, because I've heard a couple different things. I heard, we're not gonna buy coffee or water, but then I heard, put a can out and collect it. Usually the, the way those work is, you still pay it, and the revenue from the collection goes into, so...
Not usually.
I'm hearing two different things.
Usually you're usually chip in and...
Take the coffee money and go and buy...
Go buy the supplies.
They go down to Sam's Club and they re, they restock.
That, so that's a motion?
Can I just, I'd like to make just a slight change in the language, if I could, the last sentence, any approval by the board shall include a maximum spending limit, just, just to clean it up.
I'm sorry?
Any approval...
Oh.
...by the board shall include a maximum spending limit.
Considered words such?
Yeah, yeah, any approval, because we started off talking about a request, and then the next sentence talks about the approval. So was that a motion, is there a motion on the floor? Did you make a motion, or have we just been discussing?
No, I'll make that motion as it, that you just...
Okay, so that's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I go vote affirmative, aye, so it is. Are you abstaining, Phil?
No.
I didn't hear you. You voted no?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the vote is four to one. Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other? Old business. Any old business or new business? Yep. Oh, we did go by, didn't we? Yeah. It's this, opportunity for a second public comment period, anybody in the audience like to make a public comment at this point?
Figure I'm here, I was getting a double. For one, I just wanted to thank you for your entertaining my right-to-no request, and I'm not gonna be in town later on this week, and I know you have certain statutory time limits, I'm waiving that, I don't want, I know you have a lot to do, and I think you've already responded to more than half of the questions already, so, and again, the purpose of this, I, I think there has to be an educational benefit from something that I think was a bad thing, period, the end. Not looking for witch hunt or anything like that, just, we need to educate our, our officials on what that code of conduct is, and this, I think, serves as an example of that. I wanted to say that, you know, what I took out of that meeting, and what you discussed tonight about message boards and, and other things, is kind of the irony of the whole thing, was what came out of that public hearing was that we need a plan for Pinnardville. And I know that Plan Pinnardville got off on the wrong foot, it went down a path, and you couldn't corral it back, and, and it got sidetracked by issues of HUD and other things, but the reality of it is, is, is that there is a need for trying to plan for more commercial or economic development in our town, that is apparent. But I also find it, again, somewhat ironic that you folks and the Planning Board got blasted by some people who come to these meetings very frequently, because you weren't transparent, and you didn't publicize it, and you didn't do all those things, when in fact, Plan Pinnardville, there were signs everywhere, there was message boards, there was all of those things. And I did find it incredibly ironic, and I'm gonna even go so far as to say hypocritical, that the same folks who come to your meetings and ask you for $30,000 message boards, sign, are the spearheading people who are signing off on a petition to rezone other people's properties. Unbeknownst to them, I did not see the folks that come here regularly, nor our representative, John Burt, who, again, publicly was lamb, you know, blasting Plan Pinnardville, I did not see them writing letters to the paper, going door-to-door like they did on the Plan Pinnardville thing, extremely hypocritical. And as a matter of fact, if you look at that meeting, you'll have Cheryl Anderson, she wrote a letter to the, to, to the chairman, talking about the hypocrisy of that, and so did another woman on that street, because it was just wrong. So that being said, you know, please don't get sidetracked by people who obviously have some sort of personal agenda, because that's what these folks do. And last but not least, you have a petition article on the ballot, which talks about rescinding your opportunity to get grants, to accept grants. I just want you, the board, to know that you need to fight that aggressively, you need to communicate that to the public, how important it is for you, our elected officials, to have the opportunity to apply for and receive and expend from grants. Millions of dollars, I, I would just, I would bet you it's a public couple, $2 to $3 million we've gotten in grants over the last five or six years, because this board and our department's heads have had the vision to apply for the grants on things that we would have spent money on anyway. And when you take that away from you, that power away from you, it just does not make any sense. That has helped lower our tax rate, and I just hope that you work aggressively to communicate why that's such a bad idea, and continue to maybe not accept the crap that some of these people come up here and say, because it is a bunch of crap. And don't be afraid to speak your mind, because you know what, for every person that comes up here and says that you're doing a horrible job, there are a lot of people who think you're doing a great job. And just, you know, and, and I don't mind, you know, when I was a selectman, I don't mind spending money, as long as we're doing it efficiently and effectively, and that's what really what I think your, your job is, but, but please don't get sidetracked by these people who actually have no clue what they're doing, they're usually wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Just a short...
Another double dipper.
Yeah, another double dipper, since we're the only ones here. I want, I want to address the, the petition article about the receiving grant money and all so forth. Also, and here's, this is also from private sources, that blew my mind because of the fact that if we have somebody in, in town that comes up with a, say, a couple hundred thousand dollars and says wants to give it to the Grassroots Town Fund and redo the billing, you know, fix the billing up as we want to, we'd have to wait till next election for the town people to vote on it. That's ludicrous, right there, just in itself, and all the other grants, it's, it's, people have got nice sewage from it and so forth, and, and they got their water from the grants. You don't see them complaining about it.
They forget about, they forget about it.
They forget about it.
And I'll just say, whether it's grants or donations, there's very real timelines associated with those.
Some of them you...
For instance, there may be a motivation by, you know, a benefactor who wants to donate a hundred thousand, but they gotta do it before tax period.
Exactly it.
We don't come around to a town meeting until March.
That's exactly it, so...
And the grants are the same way, they got deadlines, if you don't get a grant in by the deadline, you're gone.
Absolutely. Okay, that's, you're the mic on it.
Thank you.
And you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other business to come before the board this evening?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.